Okay. Now, for the sake of, um... Reading everything, because everybody has a document in front of them. I'm just gonna say number one. And this is regarding shared services. Mr. Matt, um... You said yes. And one of the things they threw in said, um, above the on board agreements. And in your mind, um, do you know that we have true shared services that you can give an example of?
We do have shared services agreements with others. And I'll ask the CFO to weigh in on that. But the answer would be yes.
Mrs. Garrett?
The one shared service agreement that I know solidly of is along with Milburn. We share the services of an inspector. And it's an official shared service. Therefore, we can say yes.
Okay. And what are we going to is to meet with, um, council members in constant state there. For instance, um, in New Orleans, Mr. Matt, Matt was there. Councilman, um, Colby suggested that we do... And council meetings, and he was saying in the past regarding sitting down and talking with the Board of Education and trying to give more efforts versus what probably works in that service. Do you know any of those initiatives have been set down in this conversation before you had?
I don't know that maybe a conversation from up here.
Okay.
Uh, Council President.
Council Board.
I'm trying to get a clear understanding of what type of inspector are we sharing with Milburn? An housing inspector?
Specific housing, not specific.
It's a code inspector. I don't remember exactly which code, uh, one of the code inspectors.
Moving to number two. Yes, yes. Are there any questions on this? No? Moving to number three. This is a yes, Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Well, did you have this in front of you, Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this is a policy that we were supposed to update. I know, um, we asked the Board of the Board on this as well.
Yes, yes.
But it was delayed for a period of time because it took so long to get to vehicle list. But I believe we did get a vehicle list that still needs to be updated again.
Well, what the council did, we passed an ordinance that makes it mandatory for the administration to report to us those vehicles that are being used twice a year, uh, January and June. So we'll see what happens in January.
Any further questions?
And I don't, I don't necessarily agree with number three.
Okay.
If, if it's happening, some folks are in violation. And I don't know what means that we're using as a watchdog. Because apparently no one's watching the shop. Folks are taking the vehicles home and using them for personal use.
That's not the question.
Well, do any...
That's not the question.
It says prohibited personal use. It doesn't say...
Says prohibited personal use?
What's that? I mean, we're, don't, don't make it air, let's have a discussion. We're discussing this, you know? So it says a policy prohibiting personal use. And also with the, um, the W two statements, do you know the statements, the tax statements are being filed?
I don't know. I can tell you that there is, there is a policy. So therefore, the answer is yes.
The policy...
The response to the question is yes.
Mr. Matt, we can try and have a discussion. Just open your session, I hear you. Our specific is... What are we doing to prohibit the personal use that, do you know, in the W two statements?
That's...
And that's a direct financial question, because that would be on the other department, the W two statements.
That's a question that should be directed to the mayor.
Okay, well, you're here, so can you direct it to the mayor and get back to us, please?
I get back to the mayor.
All right. And is there one question you have to ask the mayor? Yes?
As you mentioned about the...
Mr. Matt, I, I told you, regarding person, prohibiting the personal use and the W two. Is that both those questions, or do we need to go to the mayor? Mr. White, can you write those questions out, please? Thank you. Moving to number four. That's a yes. Are there any other questions? Mr. Fell had a question on that as to who? Do you have an answer, Mr. Matt?
No.
Can you get an answer?
I would die.
Number five, you had yes, Mr. Fell and Ms. Ford had questions on this. And I think all of us, um, because you know our budget's on the website. Did you know that was Matt?
There... There are documents on the website. There's also a link in Emma's file.
So that Emma's off?
All the documents.
So there's a link to Emma's website now. Where it has three, the five, so Emma's five years, so is it five years? And it's currently...
What's on its down?
And what about, um... All the minutes and agendas? No, we don't, the clerk doesn't put them up. The clerk gives them to the administrations, put them up. Mr. White, can we get a response? Now, so in your view, Mr. Matt, if any portion of this question is a yes, do you consider the whole question a yes?
Not necessary.
Well, in this case, you did, because... And, and our...
I can't say all minutes are posted on this.
I'm saying, but there's several things, like the, um, solicitation bids. I don't think we have consistently, RFP bids have been consistently posted.
They've been posted.
Consistent?
On the website.
Do they drop off after a period?
Oh, they should.
Um, Madam President, um, I'm a little confused here on, um...
Number five?
Yes. Um... All these items as listed, um... Asking this question. Um, if any of these items is not listed, does that automatically make this a no? Or can we pick and choose as to what we want to, um, uh, put on the website?
Mr. Matt, or do you want to take it, Mr. White, or do you want to support on?
I just...
I, I, that's the question I just asked, Mr. Matt.
Yeah, no, I just...
Mr. Matt?
So to the best of my knowledge, all of the items here are posted on the website. If you're asking me, has every RFP ever issued been posted on the website? I don't know the answer, not today. But these items as listed here are normally posted on the website. There's no way for me to know that every item... That every, every document has been posted.
Well, well, Council President, if, if there's no way of knowing if every item is, is posted, then how can you say yes to this? But here it's asking for specifics. And I can tell you this, that their website, you click on certain items and you can't go anywhere else. It just does not move. So the website, as far as I'm concerned, is obsolete. Because there's a lot of valuable information that should be out there, that's not out there.
This question did not ask, has every item been posted?
It did ask, does your minutes apply to maintain an up-to-date? Up-to-date? So if you're talking up-to-date, our council meeting minutes are not on that website that are up-to-date?
There would be, uh, the... Those kinds of documents will be updated or should be updated once provided to whoever updates the website.
And as far as the clerk's office is concerned, I know that they go through the proper channels to get those things updated and uploaded onto the website. And it does not happen. So I don't see how you can say yes to this.
We firmly believe the answer is yes to this.
Not certifying it. The Council President's answering your question.
This is about... Number six is no. Um, I will say that I actually called down to, um, training today to see if there has been a trend change, um... In terms of elected officials being mandated to, um, take courses. And there was no legislation, there might be a recommendation. But Councilman, you come across, or Mr. Matt, you come across, or, um, Mr. White, Mr. Harris, you come across any legislation, because I wanted to see, just in terms of, because this is... Generally, all other boards have some type of mandatory training. It's not for elected officials. So I did call. But the question is constantly there, but there's not anybody stepped up to do it.
Council President, what we are recommending is that in order to, to get from knowing this on this forward, we recommend that the council pass a resolution.
Make the recommendations, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and just keep in mind that the questions have been asked, the requirements required. So you can pass a resolution requiring council members that they train. It doesn't mean that we as an administration, or you, not an obligation to make sure that council members take the training.
Well, generally, all council members do take the training, so you just don't have the resolutions.
Right, at least you should have the authority.
But I, I wanted to see what other municipal are doing when you're telling me that. So, no. Moving to number seven. This is the not applicable. Um... I, I heard Mr. Fell's question. But when I read it, with regards to him and Mr. Fell's collective bargaining agreements that we see contracts expire at one and a half to one one eleven. Because all our contracts are still in negotiation, it's probably not applicable to the answer. I, I, it's, it's kind of, it's, um... Do we know where we are? Are we, are all of them at the table, Mr. White?
The last I heard, Council President, they were not at the table. It's an arbitration, but there have been no meetings scheduled in quite a while.
Um, moving down to number eight. Mr. Matt, what is the answer to number eight?
That we still have to get the answer after that, I'm begging for, for some, or respond from Marty. So we're not sure what the answer is to that at this point. Do you have an answer?
Number nine is not applicable. Just stop me, um, if my, my head is down. Number 10 is yes. Number 11.
Uh, this one, Council President.
How was your answer? We had a discussion and...
We put, I, I'm not sure what is on the version that you have, but we made this a yes.
Martin says no, so you did have yes, okay.
We changed this to yes. I mean, the governing body has a committee that meets with the health authority. And we can believe that through that committee that you do, um, you will need this required.
And that will be, uh, Councilman Colby, Councilman Johnson. Internal accounting, number 12 is no. Are we working towards this, Mr. Matt?
I believe so.
Number 12.
Yes, this is something that we, that we need to undertake as a project. And quite honestly, I want to take a look at this, because I believe the answer should be prospective, opposed to no.
It just kind of, just sizes over, Councilman Colby, um, saw continuing the budget checklist and all of those things. So I think if we started down that road, they'll probably get us to a yes. They will analyze the things, um, from the finance committee all the way down to in your office. Moving to number 13. You had a yes there, are any questions? Did Mr. Fell have a question on that? Um... Do you want to explain your answer on this, Mr. Matt?
I don't know what question Mr. Fell had.
Because you're mistaken.
But I can tell you that in the comments section, this is precisely what we do. And this makes this a yes.
Number 14, is yes, or are there any questions? Number 15, what was that answer, Mr. Matt?
No.
Number 15 is no.
The city is significant. What, this question is the kind that we do take exception to. And we will be giving this to the undervision. Because we're looking at a situation where the city has had as many as 50 audit comments going back to roughly six years ago. We have significant improvement. Improved that situation where we had audit comments from a high of 50 down to 20. Now, there's still work that needs to be done. But this question does not provide for significant improvements that have been made over the last three years. So we do have a problem with the placement. The answer we have to give is no. But we will be giving that to the director.
Council President.
Council Johnson.
Yeah. On this statement that Mr. Matt just gave, I mean, the Warren administration's only been in office for two years. Why is he reflecting on something six years ago? If we're only dealing with, uh, the reports since 2013. 2012, there was no, the best practice was you. So why are you going back six years?
No, the best practice stays in that first one.
The reason why, uh, that's a council question. Question is that we show a trend of what has happened over the years, and where we are today. And we want to, and can demonstrate that there have been significant improvements in the accounting results and the way the, the exercise internal controls and that the financial records of the city authorities are in much better shape today than themselves with the constant improvements that we've seen in our life. And so that's the reason why we have to look back. Because oftentimes, too, you get citizens from the topic that come forward and talk about the great Jack somebody and that this never used to happen, but we could demonstrate that we have shown progress.
Please don't lose names, please. Number 16 is yes. Are there any questions? 17 is no. I'm sorry, 17 is yes?
Yes, 17 has changed to a yes. And that's because basically the CFO loves review the, the council's draft of grants. And the situation is not where it used to be. But there's a review process. And for that reason, the answer is yes.
Number 18 is no. So 18 is no?
Yes.
Should be, yes.
Why is 18 no?
The reason why is no. And we would like to put yes, but the reason is no, is because the audit needs to be completed within six months of the polls of fiscal year. And that did not happen.
When is it, when did you close the year?
The year ended December 31st.
So when did you close the books? You don't close the books on December 31st.
But that's still considered closing the year.
No, that's not, that's not. Our Donald just said, you closed the books...
I can't close the books until I've read the audit.
That's disgusting.
So you closed the books on December 31st, and there's still bills and other things coming in, and the books are closed?
But it doesn't, and that's where, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. I don't think that the question is asking, when did we close the books? I think it is asking the close of fiscal year. Now, Juan can debate that and say that...
For us, a calendar year?
Yes. We are a calendar year, December 31st. One can argue that you didn't close your year until you closed your books, so...
So what is the local, does the local finance board have a date of what the official closing of the books are? For a calendar year, maybe?
They don't, they're not asking for the closing, they're asking for the year.
My question to you.
No.
That, so local finance boards do not speak. If you're on a calendar year, the year's books shouldn't close no later than February 18th or something? So that's just kind of an open area, that you can just accept invoices until whenever? Or bills and things from last year, from previous year?
Now, the answer is this way. Statistically, the annual financial statements are due by February 10th. So one can argue that your books should be closed by February 10th. So if we use that as the close of fiscal year, then the audit is supposed to be completed within six months of the close of fiscal year. So does that mean all the state? And if it means, then to be argued that it means all the state. When did we get the audit? I'm not in court.
So 22nd was delivered to the clerk's office.
Uh, Mr. Fell, you cannot yell from the audience, please, please. Mr. Matt, no more.
22nd?
Mr....
22nd?
Mr. Fell, please, I'm sorry. Mr. Fell?
August 22nd?
22nd.
Mr. Fell? August 22nd? And so, did you... Roll down to the ask for an extension? Moving to number 19. It's a yes. Are there any questions? Moving to number 20. It's a no. Are there any questions? Moving to 21. It's a yes. Are there any questions? 22 is a guess. 23 is a no?
That, we are still, we aren't ready to concede that as a no. So we are speaking to public departments to review. The city's pay-to-play arguments compared to the state's. So that could change.
Uh, Councilwoman Ford?
Yes, Council President. As Mr. Matt stated, we, we do have an ordinance on the books for pay-to-play. Mr. Harris, can you revisit that ordinance and see if it does meet what the state has in place? If not, could you rewrite it and bring it back to the council for approval?
Yes.
Thank you.
But after the review, we could very well, if we find, why reviewing this current ordinance, that it is more restricted, we are beginning to think it's a yes.
This is 23 is to be determined. 24 is a no. 24 is a yes?
24, yes. Because there, there is, there is a cooperative energy, um, agreement with an entity called NRG, which was previously discussed. And so as a consultant, you know, Marty makes, we... We came to the conclusion that the proper answer is a yes.
Council President, I have a question on that.
Council Johnson?
Because there's multiple energy sources. And does anybody take into consideration that fuel oil is going down? When we pass the budget jacking the cost of fuel oil out of this, out of the roof? I mean, is, is, did you bait on whether or not we should revisit how much we pay for our fuel? Or we're just talking light bulbs? Gas, light?
Mr. Matt?
That's the question. We do purchase, we have a, we have an agreement with, uh, what's that entity? Where the city...
Doing the county? County express?
The right express, that's, that's who we use for purposes of gas and for people to sell. And I'm not sure about that in the state, so that might, Mary, taking a look at that based on the concrete...
So, so...
They're not affect.
But we need further review?
Yes, answer.
Okay, further review.
So, but, but it's been changed to yes?
Yes.
So at what point in time was it a discussion with the governing body?
We were discussing that with Marty today, and he couldn't recall the specific timeframe. But the fact that there is an agreement with NRG that...
We're still gonna have to come up with a date.
That indicates that there had to be a discussion with the governing body, but we don't know the date. So we will have to get back to you in terms of...
Maybe that was a meeting I missed.
In terms of, of the date. Because I think the answer is, the, if that acts for, um... So this is talked about the date. If you answer yes, please state in the comments section the appropriate date. So we have to come up with a date in order to complete this. So you will have follow-up discussions with Marty, who spoke to him later this afternoon.
That's gonna be a difficult one for you, because as far as this council person is concerned, I don't recall any of the administration having a conversation with the governing body on, uh, uh, energy. None.
I don't know, but I followed with Marty. I find it a bit difficult to, that there would be an agreement with, um, NRG without even discussion. But anything is possible. I will follow with Marty to try to ascertain what might be that, the timeframe of that discussion.
To base your conversation, you recommended a yes there?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? 25 is no. Are there any other, any questions? Mr. Bell, can you tell, are we working towards, is this, um, improving this area? Do we have, do we purchase our, uh, our gas with credit cards, or what?
This has to do with P cards. And at this time, we don't have an interest in P card, because we believe that, um... It is not beneficial to us at this time at the city. The P card, we believe that we must continue the process of putting out financial options first.
Number 6 is not applicable. Mr. Fell asked this question regarding, I believe, RPM, our funds from Sandy and the housing authority. Does, uh...
It wasn't on that.
26.
It has anything to do with earnings. It's how much money we contracted out to get work done. We haven't contracted out anybody to do work for Sandy-related issues, but $2 million. We haven't contracted out anybody to do work for Sandy-related issues, but two million dollars and more.
Okay, so that's not a down, we're not a downer of these.
There's certainly a that, two million dollar number. We have not had any kind of, anybody, and it was close to that.
Okay. And, um, on twenty-seven, you said yes to this one?
Yes.
Mr. Um, Fell also questioned on this one, um, the processes which is stated above. And you believe that, is your position that we are adhering to this statement?
I believe we are. A manual awarded contract is for service X, rents, a month of dollars, period X.
And it's printed in an official newspaper, into nature, and it's, the clerk has a copy, very confident? I'm gonna ask you. Who said yes, you didn't say that.
The clerk did the customer's record.
Well, she, the clerk, the contract will come from the administration.
But you can take action about having a contract.
And, and it's published?
So we, we, we do in fact have a written policy goal for the amount of surplus available to support administrative operations? And it's going by...
Wait, 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 we are twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I jumped there.
On twenty-eight, you put yes? Twenty-eight.
Yes, we, we would naturally, last year, the person asking the question that you're asking now was not other than the council, our president. And I did provide her, I don't know if she recalls, with the actual, um, document that shows our, our, um, policy is to aim for surplus for anywhere from between six to eight percent of the operating, um, budget. And that is in the neighborhood of three point something million dollars. And so that is our policy, and we do have that captured.
It's just that I haven't seen it written, I would like to see it.
Exactly.
Number twenty...
We do have a policy, and I can...
Can you just give it to, um, Mr. Fell? Twenty-nine is no, are there any questions? Thirty, now applicable. Thirty-one is yes. Thirty-two is yes.
What did the, Council President, what did these two respond with, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine, you have no.
You have no.
Uh, uh, Council President, where, you know which one you want, because I'm, I'm...
I just went back to, I took the twenty-one, I went back to twenty-nine.
Good, I'm glad you went back to twenty-nine.
Never had to talk about projections.